I'd like to call the City of West Bend Licensing Board for Monday, November 12th, 2018 to order and recognize that we do have a quorum of the licensing board this evening. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number one tonight is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of the licensing board held on October 22nd, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? If any none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number two is an original Class C wine license for Pearl of Canton LLC.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number three is approval of the operators licenses, and the list was in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. And item number four is approve coin and precious metals or stone dealers license for Matthew Ferring Octahedrals. Did I pronounce that right?
Close.
Alright. Located at 152 North Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. There being no further business before the licensing board, I adjourn. I'd like to call to order the common council, City of West Bend Common Council for Monday, November 12th, 2018 to order and recognize that we do have a quorum. All eight aldermen are here and accounted for. Good evening, everybody. And jump right away to item number one, which is presentation of Mayor's 2018 Beautification Awards. Right away. I come down there? Alright. I think each alderman is welcome to come down too when your district is up.
I thought it might be important, can you hear me? Hear me alright? I thought it might be important just to mention something about the award in case there are some people that aren't familiar with it here, and I know this goes out to a broader audience. But, and I'm Shirley Decker, I'm the Director of Roots and Branches, and this is, I think, our 30th year of doing the Mayor's Beautification Awards. And our mission is to help improve the environment in our community, and the Mayor's Beautification Award is part of that mission because these people have, in their own neighborhoods, improved their own property, which, when you see all the different people who have won this over the years, we're improving the city just by improving the properties that these people are responsible for tonight. So, we congratulate all of them, and the mayor will present your awards.
Thanks Shirley, I've got one little soapbox speech I just thought of while we were standing here. It just came from West Bend Mutual Insurance. It's their 125th anniversary in 2019, so they'll be doing a year-long celebration. They just gave away $2 million, $2 million to this community in four $500,000 chunks. One is to the City of West Bend to continue the river restoration project on the west side of the river. Pretty awesome. $500,000 to the New Theatre Restoration Group. That project, I think they said they raised about $1.7 million of their roughly two and a half that they need. That project is going to be moving forward. The Regner Park Baseball Diamond received a half a million dollars. That project is also going to be moving forward there at about $1.4 million totally raised after tonight. And then the Museum of Wisconsin Art was given a half a million dollars to help finish up their cool park. So, the reason I bring that up is, I was talking with a gentleman afterwards, and he said, "What's going on here in West Bend? How's all this neat stuff happening?" And I get that question a lot when I'm out at Mayor's things. And I just say, quite honestly, the community has to care. Otherwise, those things don't happen. Government doesn't have enough money. We don't have the will to take all the money from you that it would take to do all these great improvements. And we can't force people to go to the theater, and we can't force them to use a riverblock. But if the community really cares, all that stuff starts falling into place. And you guys are a perfect example of that negativity. And the common cold and flu, all that bad stuff is contagious, but so is good news. Pretty proud to be a Westbender today after leaving West Bend Mutual. Pretty neat stuff, and then getting to piggyback that with you folks here tonight. Really neat. So, thanks for everything that you do. And if you guys happen to have another half a million bucks, we'll take it. Joe and Mary Billman, familiar faces. Joe, it's very difficult for me to call him Joe. He has scolded me many, many times. He taught me everything I know about math. Yes.
He still takes the shoes off.
Well, that's how you taught me. Mr. Billman, come on up. He told me not to call him Mr. Bill. Congratulations.
Same here, thank you.
Nice to see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Bruce and Kathy Gilmeister, come on up, District 2. I'm sorry, District 3, District 3. Come on down. Gary and Jane Seymour, also another Mr. Seymour, taught me everything I know about social studies if I remember correctly. Nice to see you. I thought he looked familiar. Congratulations. John and Jenny Tyson. I don't think you guys taught me anything yet, but I'm willing to learn, willing to listen.
I think it's, no, mine's not here.
No.
Oh yeah, District 8.
Hey, Roger.
Come on over, Rich.
Yep, sorry.
I don't think our people didn't show up. Congratulations to all the winners, and thanks to Roots and Branches and Shirley. You guys all got to know Shirley, probably knew her a long time before, but a tireless advocate for beautifying West Bend. Thank you for all that you do. Thanks, everyone. And you're also welcome to stay with us talking about the budget tonight. Really exciting stuff. And the door is right back there.
At their party now, they're leaving, huh?
Yeah. Just stick around for the good stuff. And with that, I will recess the common council meeting over to Rich and Finance.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Finance Committee for November 12th to order. We have seven items on the agenda. Item number one is the minutes of October 22nd, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Item number two is disallowance for the claim against the city, Jackie and Sons.
Motion to deny. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Item number three is to approve the 2019 Shared Ride Taxi Agreements, Service and Lease, presentation by Doug Newman. Good evening, Doug.
Good evening. Everyone should have received a copy of the vehicle lease agreements between FDS and the City of West Bend. This is the fourth year of a five-year agreement. The lease uses the same terms as the past three years. Basically, the city owns the vehicles, all 14 vehicles, and FDS is responsible for repairs, maintenance, fuel costs that are accrued through our vehicle maintenance department. Tonight, we are asking for approval for the vehicle lease agreement between the City of West Bend and FDS.
Thanks, Doug. Any comments, questions for Doug? Otherwise, that'd entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Yes, John?
I'm going to have to abstain from this.
Okay.
Me as well.
Okay, that's two abstentions. Alright. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Item number four is to approve the 2019 City Shared Ride Taxi Operation.
Without the step back, one, I just did the lease agreements. I have the service agreement also.
Okay.
I just kept them separate for you.
Okay.
So, the service agreement, again, is in the fourth year of a five-year agreement. The only changes to this contract is the increase due to the Consumer Price Index, which increases the total contract by $29,022, bringing the total for 2019 taxi service contract to $1,094,041. We are asking for approval for the 2019 Taxi Service Agreement with FDS. If there are any other questions, I can answer them, or we have a representative from FDS here also.
Okay, thanks.
Motion approved.
Yes, Chris?
I don't know if you want to wait for a second.
I didn't hear one, so.
Okay. So, Doug, you know, taxis is one of my favorite items, so I won't grill you too hard. So, I looked through the statistics and numbers, so I have a couple of questions. One is, how do you think the track record for ridership is going, or how do you foresee it ending this year? Because obviously, we've been having kind of a slow trickle down in the amount of riders since you last reported in 2013. What do you predict that being this year?
Well, I do have that information. I was going to cover it in my next presentation, but I can cover that.
I can hold it, and we can answer that then, too.
That's okay, I can cover it now. Some of the interesting information that was provided as far as with the next packet of information is the ridership and where it is at year to date. Surprisingly, between last year and this year, the ridership as of September is only 87 rides different. So, we're on a pretty good trend. Some months are up, some months are down, but that's a pretty good number a year ago.
And so, in line with that, the new fares that we instituted, has that been, do you think that's affected the ridership at all, or has that been okay?
We did, we raised fares in 2017.
Yeah.
In 2018, we raised the agency fares.
Okay.
So, those help offset some additional revenue. And those are applied to agencies that receive governmental funding for supplemental rides, such as the threshold, places like that.
Yeah, it looks like your revenue hasn't changed too much. Are you guys kicking around any other ideas for revenue? I know we've kind of brainstormed it before, but I didn't know if there's other options you were thinking about.
We haven't had any new ideas, I can say that. We did research some ideas that we've talked about.
Yeah.
And it's just in panel right now.
Okay. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Second?
I got a motion and a second. Yes, Mike?
One more comment, or question, I guess. Doug, with the increase of alternative transportation options such as Uber or any other paid service, is the taxi sustainable in this community into the future in your estimation?
That's something we've been talking about the last few years, because the ridership is going down, so we addressed creating more revenue by raising the rates in 2017. In 2018, we, like I said, we raised the agency fares to help offset some of that. We're doing everything we can to try to make this as budget neutral as we can. And the fact that the ridership is as close it is, that's a very good sign for us, for moving forward. So, in the future, we may have to address, you know, rates or agency fares, again, brainstorm ideas.
It just does seem like there's a competitive culture out there in this market in particular. So, I just, I'm not fearful that it's going to be an issue, but just make sure that, you know, we're on top of it. And thinking of, like Chris said, alternative solutions or different revenue sources, or whatever it takes to make sure that it's a competitive service and that it's providing our, you know, our citizens the best that it possibly can be.
Sure. We did a comparison to a lot of other cities, and the City of West Bend is very inexpensive as far as city-funded. It's pretty self-sufficient, so we're doing real good that way.
Great, thank you.
Yes, Sean?
Rich, in answer to both of the questions, Chris and Mike, regarding competition with Uber, I know that Uber is a lot more expensive than the city taxi. Also, the private taxis, they run 24 hours, but obviously, the cost factor is there. The cost is higher than city taxi. Convenience, that's one of the most important things to most of the ridership, which, as a driver, they said that every time they need to go someplace, they can call the city, and within 30 minutes or 45 minutes, there is a taxi there to take them from point A to point B. I mentioned sometimes about the county, and they says, "The county, you have to call 24 hours ahead of time." So, if there's a nice day out there and they want to go, say, to go out to eat, they have to call 24 hours ahead of time. The city taxi, they do not. They can, Monday morning, they can call at nine o'clock and say, "I want to go to Amicon at 11:00," and we'll be there to pick them up, or the city taxi will. So, the convenience, having the city taxi, is definitely very important to all the riders. And as far as the cost-wise, very few people do complain about the cost. The convenience is what makes up the difference. Once in a great while, the city has really a great track record as far as keeping on time, but once in a while, when the track gets really busy, sometimes they wait for 45 to an hour, and then obviously, they'll be a little upset, but it doesn't happen often. But when it does, obviously, you can't predict when everybody has to go at a certain point at the same time. But, for the most part, in competition, the taxi service is still considered one of the best.
Doug, so, in 2017, we had roughly 100,000 riders. Is that individual riders, or is that rides that were given?
That's rides that were given.
Okay. So, we, at a million dollars, were subsidizing about $10 per ride. Is that the way I would look at that?
That's a close estimate, yes.
Okay.
So, the actual cost per ride, that a cost for the service is around $10, and through subsidizing grant funding, federal grant funding, we're able to keep our rates down. And that's, you know, as John had talked about, competition, you know, we can keep the cost down that way.
Right. Okay. Any other comments or questions? If not, I assume John and Steve, you're going to abstain again. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. So, now we will get to 2019 City Shared Ride Taxi Operation Update. Doug Newman?
So, the last thing I have for taxi tonight is to approve the So, the last thing I have for taxi tonight is to approve the 2019 operation, taxi operation. I shared some of the interesting information with ridership already with you. Approving this operation allows us to apply for the federal grant funding. In 2018, we received $618,000 in grant funding that helps subsidize them ridership fees. We also received $181,000 in grant funding to replace vehicles. That's about 80% cost. The other 20% falls on the city. So, the estimate that we receive from grant funding is around 54%. Again, that's how we can keep our rates down. So, we're anticipating in 2019, receiving $631,000 in grant funding for the taxi operation. And we also are applying, approving this operation also approves us to apply for repurchasing two minivans that would replace an old minivan and an old retired squad car that's in the fleet right now. Of those vehicles, the city would have to fund the 20%, which is estimated about $10,000. So, my last approval tonight, I'm asking for is operation approval of the city taxi service. If you have any questions?
Any comments or questions? If not, I entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Being no further comments or questions for Doug, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Thanks, Doug. Item number five is to approve the City of West Bend accounts receivable write-offs. Presentation by Carrie Winkerbauer. Good evening, Carrie.
Good evening. I had provided four lists of accounts that require common council authorization to deem as uncollectible tonight. The larger list is all of the ambulance outstanding bills that were returned to the city by Three Rivers, which is our outside ambulance billing agency, as all their collection efforts have been exhausted. The majority of these accounts have been placed in the state debt collection program for further follow-up collection, and then any subsequent collections by the state will result in revenue recognition when we do receive any additional funds. So, the first list totals $76,367.03. Just comparing this dollar amount to last year's write-off, since we've been in the SDC program, this year, we're at $23,500 less than last year, so that's significant savings there. The second smallest that I have attached are invoices from 2016 for miscellaneous services provided by the city and invoiced out by the finance department. This group of uncollectible accounts totals $4,485.11, and partially of that dollar amount, we're going to have the water utility and also the sewer utility pay a portion of those invoices. The third list is 2015 delinquent personal property taxes that are still owing from businesses that have ceased operations, and the total of this list, $2,0479.96. And the final list is uncollectible delinquent special assessments from properties that were sold at a loss by tax deed sales by Washington County. And the total amount of this list is $131,713.09. Then, these were assessments for sidewalks, storm sewer, street improvements, et cetera. So, in summary, I'm just asking common council authorization to deem the accounts receivable and the personal property taxes as uncollectible but still owing tonight. Are there any questions at all?
Thanks, Carrie. So, for the special assessments, I'm seeing a lot of weed cutting. Is that where we put the, we have to go out and cut the weeds and then put it on their tax bill, and we never see the dollars for it? Is that basically?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the City of West Bend accounts receivable write-offs and still allow them to be collected if, by chance, we were able to get the money back. Good luck with that. Any comments or questions? If not, yes, Mike?
I guess, Carrie, or maybe, I don't know if Carrie, you can answer this. Is there any expense to the city for trying to recover these debts any further at this point?
Through the state debt collection program, the individual that has the charge actually pays the fee to the state, so it's a free service for the city.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right. Being no further comments or questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Item number six is a resolution appropriating unclaimed property funds. Again, Carrie Winkerbauer.
All right. The finance department found out that the City of West Bend had unclaimed property at the state through the unclaimed property website, and the finance department, through accounts payable and myself, both contacted the state and the business that remitted those funds, and unfortunately, they couldn't provide any additional information at this time. So, the city now is requesting approval to use these unclaimed property funds totaling $9,004.24 to purchase new ergonomic chairs for the city employees, and also new council member chairs with these funds tonight.
I don't suppose any of those dollars are the lawn-cutting fees?
No, unfortunately not.
With a shot. Yes, Mike?
Carrie, so the state had some money sitting in a basket for us, and they can't tell us where it came from?
They did tell me the business that remitted that, but they cannot determine what it is from at this point. So, I did contact the business. I had my accounts payable clerk also reach out to them, and unfortunately, we did not get any emails or voicemails back.
Sure. Because, I mean, it's a checks and balance system, right? I'm sure you would like to know that, so that you could go back and reference
Correct.
Other things that are shortcomings. Okay. Thanks.
There aren't any other comments or questions, then I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Being no further comments or questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
I'd like to, at this time, I'd like to recess the finance committee over to the common council.
Thanks, Rich. Moving along with our agenda, item number two is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of the common council held on October 22, 2018.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Items three through nine are under the consent agenda.
We have to pull.
Nope, I'm sorry, and pull out the items six and seven for the two aldermen to abstain from. So, items three, four, five, eight, and nine.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Items six and seven, with Alderman, Hugaster, and Butchlick abstaining.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number 10 is a public hearing on the proposed City of West Bend budget for the year 2019. Anyone from the public wishing to address the item, please feel free to step up to the Same as last year.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Item number 11 is the 2019 operating budget. Just have a quick comment, and I don't know, Jay, if you have a comment to make. But this is the first time that I've been involved. I think most of the council members have been involved, many of staff with a budget post-revaluation of properties. So, in general, the council knows this, but for the public's benefit, in general, the average house in West Bend went up in value about 12.5%. So, congratulations, folks. We reduced our mill rate in West Bend about 10%. So, multiplying the mill rate times the value of your home equals a tax rate, that means that the average home in West Bend will have about a 2.5% tax increase for the City of West Bend portion of their property tax bill. Homes that went up less than 12.5% will see less of an increase. In fact, there'll be many homes and properties in West Bend that actually have a tax decrease. Since comparing the 2019 total operational costs with the 2011, going back eight years, it still costs 4% less today, or in 2019, than it did in 2011 to operate the City of West Bend, and you guys up here know this, that's a direct result of, A, lots of hard work, B, being pretty skinny in some capital projects and capital improvements. But the greatest piece of that is the debt reduction that we've been able to accomplish, mainly since about 2012 or 2013. We stood at about $82 million in debt. We're down now just a little bit north of $40 million in debt. We've reduced almost 50%. That includes the most, the largest single project that we did in that timeframe was the new police department, which we were able to do, absorbing that into our current budget. We didn't increase taxes for that. Reducing our debt that much freed up about $2 million in principal and interest payments, money that we were paying to pay back debt, we're now able to use for the operations. And then finally, in January, expect, for the council and for the public, expect a presentation on an alternate way, an alternative plan for capital projects, hopefully significantly increasing road funding, also increasing some other capital funds for capital improvements that we've been, wouldn't say we've been putting things off, but we haven't been as aggressive, because we've been working on paying down debt. I think that new plan will be a breath of fresh air for the folks that are concerned about the roads. It also is going to continue our trend of paying off more debt than we're taking on. So, I really believe, knock on wood, that the hard work and the belt tightening and some of the arrows we may have taken over the last few years is really starting to pay off, and we'll see that in early 2019. Jay, do you have any comments on the budget in general?
Just a thank you to staff. Carrie and her team in the finance department did a great job preparing the budget. This was the first year that we received the GFOA budget award, and that's a great compliment for a community to receive, certainly one that was not done without effort. Carrie is prepared to answer any questions that you might have as well, but thanks to the department heads for working hard on the budget, there's staff that is involved in the budget. It's the first year that we worked with Rich as the finance committee chair, so we had lots of meetings with the mayor and Rich to discuss budget goals and prepare for the future. Otherwise, I'm excited about it. I think it's a positive document. I always share with the group that this is the single most important piece of policy that you adopt in any given year on an annual basis, and I think this is a good one that's proposed before you.
Any comments or questions? I've got one more thing I thought of, as long as the microphone's on.
Sure. That revaluation is something that the state required us to do. I just think it's important that people understand that, that it's not something the city decided just out of the blue they wanted to do, that that was a state requirement, so.
There were times back in the late '90s, early 2000s, that we were doing one every other year. We have to fall within certain parameters as put forward by the state, and actually, we held off an extra year. We had considered doing it in 2017, actually pushed it off to 2018 to fit within, again, these parameters. The last comment that I have is some of the aldermen that are seasoned, Roger, Steve, seasoned in tenure, not in age, that have been on the council long enough, remember that the budget night used to be two nights, where we had 500, 600 pages of a budget that we were given a week ago. We were to absorb all that information, and then one by one, we would parade department heads here and grill them as to why they can't adjust their budget by a couple of bucks here or there. I'm proud and happy, and it seems as though the council is comfortable with the process, where we start talking about the budget. As a matter of fact, we're going to get together the first week in December and start talking about the 2020 budget. We'll be presenting, as I mentioned, some elements of that in early January, and then continue to update the council, so it's not one whirlwind, seven- or 10-day opportunity that the council has to get involved on the budget. You can go back to your districts and communicate what we're working on well ahead of time. So, unless we, we could always go back to the good old days, but this seems to be something that is rewarding. We're able to, again, discuss this for, in this case, we'll be talking about it for 13 months before it actually comes into play. So, with that, I would, unless there are any other questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the 2019 operating budget.
Motion approved.
Second.
I think that's what I'm doing, right? Or is it the next item? So, 11 was just a discussion item?
That's correct.
Okay, we discussed it. Item 12 is a resolution appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the City of West Bend for the year 2019.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any final questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Congratulations, and thanks to the staff, Jay, Carrie, everyone else has put in lots and lots of time on that. Item 13 is a disallowance for the claim against the city, Jackie and Sons.
Motion to DNR.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item 14 is a decision on acceptance of land from the redevelopment authority. Jay, do you have a little tidbit on what this is?
Sure. I can start, and Ian can jump in if necessary. Now, the redevelopment authority's role, as you know, is to assist the city with land that's a little more difficult to redevelop and turn into a productive parcel within the city. There was a remnant parcel, along with the construction of the Eisenbaum Trail, and the sale of the property to auxiliary court apartments that had been hanging out there. There was a decision by the development department, a recommendation by the development department, to not include it, give it to the city at the time, just from an ease of redeveloping that property. Now, it's fully developed, and it's time to transfer it over. It's a really tiny triangle parcel that you have in your packet.
Thanks, Jay. Is there anything else that does, would someone else be a better holder of that chunk of property, the auxiliary court folks want it? I don't know if you guys have looked at, and this has got to be like a couple thousand square foot chunk of land, right?
I think it was 1,100.
1,100 square feet?
It was smaller than a standard house.
Yeah. So, what does the city do with it if we hang on to it? It just sits there in perpetuity?
Go ahead, Dan.
The, we can't give the land to anybody else, strictly because the DNR has the easement over the Eisenbaum Trail, so they need a public pathway. It can't be held privately.
Gotcha. That clears that up. Any other comments or questions?
Is there any liability on the part of the city?
No more so than any other sidewalk or anything.
Okay. It's not, yeah, never mind.
I entertain a motion on the item.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. On to reports, starting off with Alderman Hugaster regarding the park and recreation commission meeting.
I was not there, and from what I was told, there wasn't a quorum, so there was no official meeting.
So, item 16, then. Item 16, report by Alderman Christian regarding the downtown bid board meeting.
Bid board meeting on October 2nd was held, actually, at the fire department downtown on Seventh Avenue. So, it was a little change of scenery, which is always interesting, but very good and well-attended. There's a group called Plen Air. They're a group of artists from the Milwaukee area, Milwaukee League of Artists, who have been up in the West Bend area in the previous years, doing some painting of buildings and scenes in the West Bend area, and then offering them for sale. So, they were there presenting to us just to garner support and potential sponsorships for next year's planned event in June, I'm sorry, August of next year. So, just a nice presentation. You know, I think we were all very encouraging of their efforts. Anytime there's activities like that in the West Bend area, they're really encouraging. The community seems to like it, citizens like it, and so we were pleasantly, very nice to have them do their presentation for us again, and looking forward to working with them in the future. The commons group was the group of students who came to our area a few weeks back on behalf of the bid board. behalf of the bid board, looking for development options for the downtown area, different ideas, brainstorming session. So we talked about that process and will work to move forward with some of those ideas that were created that day. A lot of good information and kind of some out of the box thoughts, but that's what we were hoping for, just to really gain some fun and different ideas about what we can do in, in the downtown area. Adam Gitter is, is leading that charge and will kind of develop a game plan moving forward of what we might consider doing. We did talk about, so there's some issues with decorations on wires in the downtown area. It's been brought to our attention that Doug Newman there with Public Works has indicated that there may be some potential problems with the safety and structural integrity of, of those wires holding on to decorations in the downtown area. So there is some consideration and some language that needs to be cleared up on to whose responsibility those wires are. And if there are issues down the road, who is going to be, you know, kind of responsible for, for those wires? We agreed that we all would like to see them stay, but we have to figure out a way to make sure that that is feasible. And along those lines, Christmas decorations will be going up, starting this week. And we're always looking for volunteers, so I don't know, Adam, are you working with the volunteers for that or who should, who should volunteers contact if they are interested in helping put up decorations? Adam Gitter, reach out to Adam Gitter here at the, at city hall. And then also finally, we did have, we requested this from the Downtown West Bend Association and the Diva Group. There's some marketing agencies in the downtown area that help develop events in the downtown area. We requested a, a marketing presentation from them to help explain where the funds go that we offer them to help advertise and market their events. And they did a wonderful job in making some presentations and cleared up some, some questions regarding our partnerships and, and our cooperation with them and, and helping make sure that their events are representative of the, of what the bid board is, is really looking for and is really benefiting the city in a whole. So a really well-done job by the Downtown West Bend Association and the Diva Group for making that nice presentation for us and, and helping us understand where, where those funds are.
Thank you Mike. Any questions for Alderman Christian? Moving ahead to a report by, are there Alderman Jenkins or Caston regarding the plan commission? I don't think, were either one of you guys there? Rich wasn't there? We did some good stuff. I'm just trying to remember. Been a kind of a busy week. We talked about a potential commercial development in one of the Johan gravel pits. It's in the city. It's a little bit of a challenging site, kind of down in the hole, not serviced by sewer and water. We approved an extraterritorial land division and I think that may have been it, but Ian's going to correct me in a second here. There may have been a third item. Oh yes, the Little League is actually taking ownership of their property. My understanding is they were under a long lease with Washington County. It is now their property. So congrats to the Little League. Any questions for me? All right, item 18 is a report by Alderman Caston regarding the tourism commission meeting.
All right, we met on October 30th, right before Halloween. Had a couple of things on the agenda. One was to review all the winter tourism promotion grant applications we've received with respect to the grant that we were offering, obviously for a winter event. We had none, so that was a quick review. And we did not award that, those dollars, so they will carry over into next year when we will again work with the community to get grant applications out there again. There was some discussion that it may have been too short of notice, things like that. So we will definitely get that notice out much earlier. And then we discussed the 2019 budget and allocating the 2019 tourism funds, which you should have seen in your, in your budget packet. Changed it up a little bit from the way we've done it in the past. We're kind of moving to more of an agile, event-driven approach to allocating tourism funds. So it kind of changed up some of the allocations we've done in the past.
Thanks Rich. Any questions for Rich? And being no further business before the common council adjourn, and I've got one quick announcement. That I touched on a little earlier, thank you very much, much to the West Bend Mutual Charitable Trust. A true half a million dollars, as I mentioned, they, they gave out two million bucks to the community tonight and pretty amazing stuff, all centered around downtown West Bend. The furthest removed from downtown is the Ball Diamond at Regner Park. We'll still consider that downtown. And it's just going to continue to really revitalize and improve West Bend. So congratulations to West Bend Mutual on their 125th birthday that's coming up. It was kind of cool, some family members from the original founders were there tonight. Very neat stuff. Congratulations and thank you to those folks. And we'll kick it back to Rich for finance.
I'd like to reconvene the finance committee with item number seven being closed session. Entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to state statutes, section 19.85, section 1. So be deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or barring reasons require a closed session, consideration of a land purchase.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Christian?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hugaster?
Aye.
Alderman Maddow?
Aye.
Alderman Kist?
Aye.
We're in closed session.
And we will adjourn from closed session tonight. Thank you everybody.